Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Wyoming City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Robles?
Here.
Mr. Stateful Taylor?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being live streamed on the city's YouTube channel, accessible from the city's website. If you would like to address City Council, please come up to the microphone to speak. The audio will not pick up if you do not speak into a microphone for those watching from YouTube. There are four items on the consent agenda. They are: approval of the August 21st, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes; approval of the August 28th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes; a resolution authorizing the then-and-now certificate; and a resolution honoring the service of Bobby Strangfeld on the Urban Forestry and Beautification Commission of the City of Wyoming, Ohio. Do I hear a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mr.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So I'd like to ask Bobby to come up to the podium, please. "A resolution honoring the services of Bobby Strangfeld on the Urban Forestry and Beautification Commission of the City of Wyoming, Ohio. Whereas Bobby Strangfeld served the people of the City of Wyoming as a member of the Beautify Wyoming Commission from June 2008 until December 2011, when it merged with the Urban Forestry Board, and is a member of the Urban Forestry and Beautification Commission since January 2012, as well as served as chairperson of the Urban Forestry and Beautification Commission during part of her time serving on the commission. And in doing so, has promoted the enrichment and adornment of common areas and public gathering spaces in the community, and has worked arduously to protect and preserve the arboreal legacy provided to this generation by generations past. And whereas the quality of life and property values in our city are enhanced by the efforts of all within the community to upgrade and beautify their property and to maintain the urban canopy. And whereas the commission recognized the trees that make Wyoming special and an outstanding examples of exterior appearances and landscaping which grace our neighborhoods and promote the enhancement of all public spaces and green areas in the city. And whereas Bobby has graciously given talent and expertise in this volunteer service to the community, including being instrumental in the installation of the rain garden and the cleanup and restoration of Stearns Woods, and can be proud of the foundation that has been laid, so when others drive down the streets of Wyoming, they can enjoy the beautification efforts and the urban canopy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Wyoming, on behalf of the people of the city, wishes to thank Bobby Strangfeld for surfacing the people of the City of Wyoming. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the Council of the City of Wyoming and be presented to Bobby as but a small token of our continuing appreciation and esteem. Passed unanimously in council chambers of the City of Wyoming, Ohio, this 18th day of September 2023."
Thank you very much. It was my honor. I enjoyed every minute of it.
Congratulations. Are there any questions or comments on the special reports? Okay, then we will now hear a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So just wanted to give everybody a Village Green update. If you get a chance, go check out our progress on the construction at the Village Green. It's really starting to come together. You can even see the word or the phrase Village Green there at the front on the seat wall. It looks really neat. So we're hoping that our goal is to have the front portion of the pavilion, what we call the formal lawn, done for Fall Festival, which is October 7th, and then the pavilion should follow just a couple weeks later. So we're pretty excited about that. So if you haven't, check it out. It's coming along rather well. Also on that note, the Fall Festival is Saturday, October 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's in the downtown business district, and we have over 100 vendors participating this year. It's going to be a really large Fall Festival. There will be live performances throughout the day at Crescent Park. There'll be activities for the kids, including free face painting by the Cincinnati Circus Company, and there will be a petting zoo as well. So take a look at that. And then our fall leaf collection begins October 9th. I know it's hard to believe that the leaves are going to start coming down soon. So rake your leaves to the curb, not in the street. And then the city crews will start coming around October 9th to pick up those leaves. There's not a specific schedule, so don't worry. If the pile sits in front of your house a couple days, they will get there, and they'll run routinely until December 1st. If you do have any questions, you can contact our Public Works Director, Rob Nichols. You can get him his email and phone number on our website. And then last I have is just an employment opportunity. The city is accepting applications for part-time paramedics, and you can find an application for that on the city's website. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Super, thank you. Are there any council committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? Are there any special committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? Okay. Then we've reached that point in our meeting where a citizen may express an opinion, make a statement, address a concern, or ask a question on any subject that is not otherwise on the agenda. Comments will be recorded into the minutes and passed along to be addressed by the appropriate staff or City Council Committee as needed. This portion of the meeting is not for City Council to provide responses to a citizen comment, but to hear what the citizen has to say. And if you wish a response from the city to your concern or request for information, please be sure to leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave the meeting. And as a reminder, please state your name and address before making your comments to City Council. Is there anyone present that would like to bring an item not otherwise on the agenda before City Council?
My name is Warner Lang. I'm my wife our new residents of the distinguished village of Wyoming. That's 60 Oliver. And first of all, I would like to congratulate the Wyoming High School Football Team on gaining the distinction of being number one in the state of having a unbroken record of wins at home. That's very good.
Awesome.
Secondly, I'd like to call your attention to another distinction of the greater Cincinnati area, and that is the Cincinnati Southern Railroad. It is the only railway owned by municipality in the entire nation. That is a very proud distinction that is under threat with issue 21, which is on the ballot this November. I know that residents of Wyoming are not able to vote on this, but we have trains that run routinely through the center of Wyoming, as well as Norfolk Southern, within a mile running its freight through this area. Our former residence was in northeast Ohio, a mere 30 miles away from East Palestine. I think you've all heard of the community. Norfolk Southern has destroyed that community. The pain of the residents, the loss of health, the loss of wealth is tremendous, and it is ongoing. God forbid that any such derailment happened to any other community, especially this one in the United States. But without safeguards, that may happen. I am bitterly disappointed that in the eight months since that derailment, there has been nothing meaningful in terms of national or state legislation to enhance the safety of our railways. That is an atrocity, and this community is vulnerable. With the Cincinnati Southern Railway intact, we still, through our elected officials, at least in the city, have an opportunity to oversight and control some of the operations of Norfolk Southern. And God knows, they need to be controlled. That is a very, very reckless corporation. It has more derailments in Ohio than any other railway, and that needs to come to an end. With that oversight, the public has the possibility of at least influencing some of their operations and enhancing the safety of our community. There are many, many other reasons to vote against issue 22. I have a whole list of them here, and I will spare you the reading of them, but if anybody's interested, I would welcome you to take a copy. I would just like to close with a statement that was found in the legal filing that accused the Cincinnati Southern Railway Board of Trustees with violating the Ohio Open Records Law, which they blatantly did in negotiating this terrible, terrible deal in secret without any public input. And in that document, you will find this statement that quotes another legal document. "The Cincinnati Railway has proven to be the city's greatest moneymaker. The return investment, dollar for dollar, is unmatched. Cincinnati citizens may well be glad that voters in 1896 rejected the idea of selling the Cincinnati Southern. The railroad that resulted from the city's far-seeing enterprise almost a century ago has already returned its cost several times over in cash rentals. It is and will be the source of a large and steady income for the city. In other words, don't kill the goose that lays the golden egg. I encourage the council, if you would like to, to pass a resolution also opposing 22, but otherwise communicate your sentiment on this issue to voters in Cincinnati. Thank you for your consideration and your turn."
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Is there anyone else present that would like to bring an item not otherwise on the agenda before City Council? Okay, so we'll move on to new business. This is the third reading of the ordinance approving the development plan for the Brave Like Brayden Community Dog Park located at 514 to 520 Van Roberts Place and amending the zoning code. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Is there any discussion? One piece of discussion I'd like to share with councils. I did receive a petition from eight residents on Van Roberts this morning. The comment period was last month, but do just want to make sure that you're all aware that a petition came in this morning, you know, expressing that they would prefer not to have a dog park.
I guess I have some questions just about, maybe for the betterment of the conversation in general, or round it out. So when the city has otherwise in the past, not given up control, but sold property or whatever the reason might be, we have done an RFP for what the opportunity could look like on that property. And this is, this instance, because we had the idea proposed to the city, we didn't do that. And so I'm curious if there's a, like, I just want to verify that we've done everything appropriately through process in this, and that we didn't need to do some type of open RFP for this to be able to let it continue to go down the path it's going down.
There'd be no requirement to do an RFP for a project like this. This was projected as kind of a private-public partnership opportunity. As a public-private partnership opportunity, and the city is not actually losing control of the property, the city will continue to own the property and will run the property once the dog park is in place. Obviously, there's still some details to be worked out through the MOU process, which will follow this vote this evening, if it goes forward. But, but all the laws and rules that the city is required to follow for this project will be followed.
Okay. And then, will they be running the project? Will we be running the project? How's it going to get executed if it gets approved?
Some of those details have to be worked out through the MOU, but by and large part, the city will be responsible for ensuring that it is constructed under the rules that the city required, will put in place.
Okay. And then, I suppose, if there's a opportunity where it's not utilized land, et cetera, the city, I know you have some details to still work out, right? But is the city going to have, like, onerous clawbacks on that? What's it, like, how's that going to?
We will always own it, and we will always reserve the right to use that property however the city sees fit. So if, you know, at some point in time in the future, that's not what the city thinks is the best use of that property, or there's another opportunity, the city would have the right to explore that.
Okay. So it's current use, proposed, could change in two, five, 10 years if it's not utilized appropriately or whatever, if we find a better use?
That's correct.
Not that we're looking for a better use.
No, of course not. And I don't want to put anything out there that suggests that that would be the case. It's obviously a big investment, but the city would retain those types of rights to control the use of the property.
Okay. And then maybe the last thing is, so I can imagine walking down there, I'm sort of like trying to put myself in the shoes of the majority of the community who would be walking or driving down to this place to utilize it, or stopping at the flower shop, getting flowers, or getting pastries at the pastry shop, or, you know, so there's some economic development that is certainly going to happen, I think, as a result of this existing there. Part of that is a question about the Dora District. Does the Dora extend into that property? Are we looking to extend it into that property?
So part of the, if there's a vote to proceed with this tonight, yes. The next part would be to extend the Dora. Currently includes the parking lot. It doesn't currently include that lot, but we would expand. We're looking at potential expanding of the Dora in three different areas. This would just be one of them.
Okay.
And we would do all of that. And that would go through a similar type process, public hearing. It would have three readings through council. It would be similar to this process.
Okay.
And we would look to start that as if we were to move forward.
Okay. And then maybe my last question, and I'll stop talking, I suppose, is, do we know what the ongoing estimated maintenance is? I know there's going to be a sprinkler system. I don't know why my microphone sounds so terrible, sorry. But is there, like, an estimate on what our annual, monthly annual maintenance cost might be? Are we budgeting for it specifically? Are we worried about vandalism? Anything else?
Well, we, we don't have a specific budget for this park, but we have maintenance for all of our parks. That would be, it would fall within that. I don't, it's not budgeted for next year. We don't, again, we don't have that, the park approved yet, and when it will be officially built is somewhat dependent on fundraising.
Okay.
But at that point, we would begin to budget for the park. It's the whole, the goal of the park was to be, there's nothing that's maintenance-free, but to be light on the maintenance, meaning designed in a way that would not require a lot of attention. But it will still need trash pickup. It will still need to be cleaned. All that thing, all those things that we do at other parks will still need to be done at this park. If it does need maintenance items, we would be taking care of those as well. So just like any of our parks, our goal is to keep it looking as great and as beautiful as, as possible. That will carry with it some costs. I don't have costs associated with that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, a few. I think it was two, three years ago, there was a proposal for a restaurant around that property that would have been made out of containers. And the process for that was not like this. It didn't start at the planning commission like it should have, and it did fall apart. So I think for me, one of the benefits with this process is how thoroughly and how long this has been done. But it does, I just, given how long that property has sat there, I'm wondering if you could, if you could speed in a bit about the history of the parking lot, how it's all zoned, if there have been any other efforts to use that. I think, I guess what I'm asking is, here we have, if we have an opportunity, are there other things that we might look?
I can give some information. Unfortunately, Megan is not here tonight. She would be the best to answer that question. I can only speak somewhat to my just general knowledge is from my previous position, but clearly it's been a parking lot for several years. There was remediation that needed to be done because of the gas station that was there, and it took multiple years for that remediation to happen. The properties that were behind there were homes at one point, and those were taken down. I don't know why they were taken down. That wasn't, wasn't part of that process. But for many years, and I don't know the exact number of years, it's been sitting there as a parking lot in grass lots. And as far as use for the lots, the only use that I'm aware of that was potential was that potential restaurant that looked at coming in to the parking lot. It would have taken up the entire parking lot and been a restaurant slash bar, and we didn't feel it was appropriate to move forward that for many reasons, and so that didn't move forward.
And then the other piece of this, so just in the time that I hate or a little more that I've lived in Wyoming, our business district has been very, very quiet. You would go and maybe something would be open, it would be happy, something else. We are seeing more life, which is good, to see that small businesses doing better or more foot traffic. And we saw this with Chris, and there's this balance between adding new to a neighborhood that's used to be extremely quiet. I'm wondering, given the fan we have, or given the city control of the dog park, is there an additional tree line, or is there more we could do if within the neighborhood this were to need a little additional enhancement to fit in?
So I think you're asking?
Are we at liberty to add trees, like tree buffers?
So I would say, yes, we are at liberty to add trees. I think, again, what we've looked at so far is renderings. We're at the concept phase, so the next step, if, if we move past concept, is to actually get those real designs into, into play and make sure that the landscaping is ideal for what we expect from our parks. I think that the Brave Like Me Foundation fully plans to create a beautiful park there, and we'll guide them to help make sure that that happens. And where we can add trees, where we can add a natural landscape, we will certainly do that. That would be, the ultimate goal is to create a beautiful park there that just continues to accent everything that Wyoming has to offer.
Thank you.
Just one more question about a process that would happen after this, so if it's voted, if it's voted not in favor, or if the council votes not in favor, is the idea gone for good, is a question first? So how does that, like, what happens to the idea? Is there a better place for it? Something like that?
So from a process standpoint, the same concept would not come back through this procedure. There would have to be some changes. It would have to be, the concept would have to be changed in some way, or a different location, or, you know, if council were to vote this down, it could come back, but with some changes.
Okay.
Okay. But, but once council has taken action on this particular item, the same exact, identical application cannot be processed through again.
Okay. And then, so then the other scenario is council approves it to the question like Sarah's asking about additional trees, et cetera. Is there, who impacts the drive forward? Is it just in your hands, your team's hands, to take this forward? Is there, like, additional planning commission review of, like, the final plan to go forward? Is there any additional review, I guess, is what I'm asking?
But planning commission has approved the project. What would happen at that point is we'd work with Emily. The MOU would be the, the next big step to make sure that we have
All the details.
All the details worked out as to how the project moves forward.
Okay.
That would be the next big hurdle. And then, once the details are worked out and we have a design, a full design, and I don't know the name of these things, but Rob could probably say, what's the type of design we're looking for? The paper?
Bit package.
A bit. So what, once we had a big package design, then we, then we can have an understanding of what this project is really going to cost. And then that can be what the foundation uses as their fundraising goal to, to make the project happen.
Okay.
And then we would wait for the fundraising to happen. We wouldn't move forward unless it was fully funded. Is that correct? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one, one comment. I, I feel, I feel good about the dog park. I don't feel great about the dog park. And the reason I don't feel great about the dog park are because of the, the questions that are still kind of out there, because we do have neighbors that are going to be impacted by this, and I want to make sure, and I was talking to some of my colleagues about this, I want to make sure that this is not just an enhancement for the city, I want to make it an enhancement for, in particular, the people that live closest to this dog park. And if we don't accomplish that, I won't feel great about this situation. So I'm very hopeful that we very strategically will make sure that this is a winner for everybody, not just a winner for people that don't live on Van Roberts. And I know we've got a lot of smart people here, a lot of smart people out there, including our folks on Van Roberts. I want to make sure we get this right, not just get it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. So having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, it takes an affirmative vote of four for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Woodside?
Yes.
Mr. Robles?
Yes.
Mr. Stateful Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Prehouse?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. Our next agenda item is a report from the Finance Committee on the proposed fees and charges for 2024 on the operating philosophy and financial policy, on the waterworks revenue fund operating philosophy and financial policy, on the investment policy, and on the debt policy. And I'll now turn it over to the Finance Director.
Good evening. So tonight I do have a report from the Finance Committee. A Finance Committee met today at 8:00 a.m. to review several of the city's financial policies. The Finance Committee met and reviewed the city's investment policy, and there were no recommended changes by staff or the committee. The committee also reviewed the operating philosophy and financial policy, and the waterworks revenue fund operating philosophy and financial policy. And again, there were no recommended, recommended changes by the committee or the city staff. The committee also reviewed the city's debt policy, and again, there were no recommended changes by the staff or the committee members. And so each year, our Finance Committee does go through and reviews those four policies just to make sure that they're up to date and reflect the financial policies and goals of the city. In that meeting, the Finance Committee members also reviewed the 2024 proposed fee schedule, and the Finance Committee will actually meet again on September 25th to finalize to finalize the proposed fee schedule, changes for two thousand twenty-four. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So it's recommended that the report be received. Do I hear a motion with respect to the report?
I'm moved to accept the report, proceed the report.
Second. Any discussion?
I think the only thing to say is that always, I always feel good leaving the finance meetings, which I, I think we should all feel good about it. So thank you for everything you and the team do. Because every time we ask tough questions or try to explain and get more explanation, it's always, if we can't answer it, we'll ask, we'll have another time to meet, and we'll get the right people in the room. So anyway, thank you for all you're doing.
I do have one. I guess it's a procedural question, which I think I asked this morning. I'm still not clear. Since we will be having another meeting to go over the fee schedule, and the next up is a reading of the ordinance adopting the revised fees and changes. Once we, what, which set of fees are we voting on? And if we meet next week, and those fees are ordinarily proposed change, do we start off with a first hearing of that, or they can be adapted? And like, it's forever to act in order?
So council can by motion amend any ordinance during the course of its three readings. So if there are changes to be made between now and the second reading, those changes would be communicated to Karen and myself, and we would make sure those changes were in the next reading, and then council could move to amend the ordinance to reflect those changes.
Good. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. So having been moved and seconded to receive the report, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. So this is the first reading of the ordinance adopting the revised fees and charges for two thousand twenty-four. Are there any other questions? You know, we had, you had the proposal in the pre-reading, and there were just a couple places at the Finance Committee just that felt like that we ought to go back and take another look that, that we might be raising fees too aggressively in a couple places. And so wanted to have a further discussion. So, okay. So a public hearing and the second reading are set for October sixteenth, City Council meeting. So next, this is the first reading of the ordinance amending the personnel ordinance and declaring an emergency. It is recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Ms. Freehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Ms. Robles?
Yes. 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 The motion carries. So we'll now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance? Second. Any discussion? Having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Robles?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. So next, this is the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter one hundred and forty-four of the codified ordinances of the city of Wyoming pertaining to contracting and competitive bidding requirements and declaring an emergency. It is recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
Oh, moved to suspend.
Second.
Is there any discussion? So this ordinance is simply getting us in line with, with the new State of Ohio guidelines, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything? All right. Having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Ms. Freehouse?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Robles?
Yes. 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 The motion carries. We will now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Robles?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Freehouse?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. This is the first reading of the ordinance appropriating revenues within certain funds, transferring revenues from certain funds, and transferring certain funds within designated accounts. It is recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
I'm moved to suspend the rules.
Second. Is there any discussion? Having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. The motion carries. We'll now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I'm moved to adopt the ordinance.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll? And it takes an affirmative vote of four for passage.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. Does anyone have any new business not otherwise on the agenda? No? In which case, we get to the miscellaneous portion of the meeting, and I'll start tonight with you, Chris. Okay. April?
Super excited about the Fall Festival. I'm really, like, amazing job bringing in the vendors. I think that's really great. And now we just need to get everyone here, as well as neighboring communities and visitors, around for a great day. So really excited for that.
Thank you.
The only thing I have on my mind, other than what we discussed earlier, I have a kid who's in his first year of high school across country. And I'm getting daily reports from a very pedestrian point of view about, you know, there's a little sidewalk that's a little bit off over here. Or you run all the way to the line, and the pedestrian, oh, sign isn't working. He likes that we have so much construction due to all the porta-potties available. But I'm hearing through him how much all these kids are enjoying just running around now that it's cool. And running through our city. And there's just something very sweet about the freedom they have to roam around here and the memories they're making.
Awesome. Thank you. Grant?
Nothing for me tonight.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to talk about is really thanking Public Works and thanking Rob. The amount of construction that you guys have taken on this summer between the hike bike trail, the roads work, the sidewalk work, the fact that we're going to have a beautiful village green pavilion. And it just, you know, is, it's really appreciated by all of council that that is an enormous amount of work to take on at once. And we're really close to the end, so just want to thank you. Okay. Do I hear a motion to excuse Ms. Waffington?
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded to excuse Ms. Waffington, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Ms. Freehouse?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Robles?
Yes. 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 The motion carries. There is no executive session tonight. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Having been moved and seconded to adjourn for the night, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries, and council stands adjourned.